I'm here today for a public hearing of the Vetting Commission, established under Law Number 65, year 2023, on the external evaluation of judges and candidates for judges of the Supreme Court of Justice. I'm Scott Bales, the Chair of Panel B of the Commission, and I declare this session open. The hearing is being conducted under Law Number 252 of the year 2023 on the external evaluation of judges and prosecutors and amending some normative acts, and also under the Commission's Rules of Organization and Functioning. The subject of today's hearing is Sergey Pilipenko, a judge of the Southern Court of Appeals. This court was called the Kahul Kahul Court of Appeal until it was renamed on December 27th last year. Judge Pilipenko, welcome. I believe you're also accompanied by your legal counsel, Mr. Zama. The law and the rules provide that you may have the assistance of a lawyer or a training lawyer during the evaluation process. At the hearing, the panel will allow you to consult with your attorney whenever you wish. Lawyers, however, are not allowed to respond to the panel when it asks the subject questions about the identified doubts. The subject's knowledge and statements are relevant to the panel's determinations. I'm joined by two other panel members. You will see also in the hearing room, panel member Willen Brower and panel member Yuri Gatskin. Panel is also assisted by members of its secretariat, and you may see in the room representatives of the media and the public. The photographer who is present will take some photographs just at the beginning of the session. The hearing will be conducted with interpretation between Romanian and English. To allow for accurate interpretation, I ask everyone to speak clearly and slowly. Only one person should speak at a time. Furthermore, proceedings are being recorded. The recordings of public hearings generally will be available online at the Commission's website, within three days of the hearing. During the hearing, one or more members of the panel may ask you questions. We ask that you answer them truthfully and completely. Your explanations are important to the panel in verifying your financial and ethical integrity. At the end of the hearing, you will be given an opportunity to make a brief closing statement. Imposing questions, we will take into account your privacy and where required and possible, the privacy of your family members and close persons. We will leave out unnecessary details such as ID numbers, bank account numbers, specific real estate addresses, and so on. For the protection of privacy, we ask you to do the same. I will start by briefly reviewing the evaluation process for Judge Pilipenko. The Commission initiated its evaluation on the 7th of November 2024 by notifying the judge by email and asking him to complete and return an ethics questionnaire and the declarations required by Law Number 252. Judge Pilipenko returned the completed declarations and questionnaire on November 27th, 2024. As part of evaluating subjects' ethical and financial integrity, the Commission also obtains information from many other sources, such as the National Integrity Authority, the State Fiscal Service, the General Inspector to the Border Police, other public institutions, financial institutions, and open sources. The Commission assesses information it obtains for relevance and reliability. From March through May 2025, the panel asked Judge Pilipenko three rounds of questions to clarify certain matters. After requesting extensions to respond to each set of questions, which were granted, the judge provided answers and documents in response. On the 6th of June this year, we notified Judge Pilipenko that the panel had identified and wished to discuss some areas of doubt about his compliance with the integrity criteria, and we invited him to attend today's hearing. On June 10th, 2025, Judge requested access to the evaluation materials, which were granted to him on June 12th. On June 11th, 2025, the subject asked to postpone his hearing because he had that day sought expert assistance to review certain matters identified in the Commission's hearing notice. The Commission granted this request. On June 30th, 2025, Judge Pilipenko asked for another extension of his hearing, which was granted. On 12th of July, 2025, Judge Pilipenko presented additional documents, including a financial accounting expertise report. On July 25th, 2025, we notified Judge Pilipenko for a second time that the panel had identified and wished to discuss some areas of doubt about his compliance with the integrity criteria, and we invited him to attend today's hearing. Judge Pilipenko, do you wish to make any corrections or additions to the information that you've provided to this point to the Commission?
No. I don't want to add anything.
Okay. And are the answers that you provided in your ethics questionnaire and the declarations that you returned to the Commission on November 27th, 2024, are they still accurate as of today?
With some additions. I answered, as I did. I sent all answers to the questions, and if there's something to add, I will add.
All right. But to this point, you have no additional corrections or additions apart from what you've submitted to the Commission. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. The panel members are now going to ask some additional questions. We will try to keep our questions short and to the point, and we ask that your answers be short and to the point as well. And I will start with our follow-up questions. Judge Pilipenko, as you know, one of our identified areas of concerns relates to inexplicable wealth, and we preliminarily identified inexplicable wealth in the amount of 324,717 Moldovan lei. And this was based on four different years under the evaluation period 2012, 2013, 2020, and 2023. With that background, I just want to ask you first some questions about the calculation as concerns consumption expenditures per population or CHEP. As you know, the Commission uses the CHEP estimates to calculate cash expenditures by the subjects under evaluation, and those are based on surveys prepared by the National Bureau of Statistics. Now, in your responses to the Commission, you made... You said there should be three adjustments to our use of CHEP, and I just want to make sure we've clearly understood your position. You maintained that CHEP should not be calculated based just on urban settings because you spent some time at your parents-in-law's residence in a rural setting. So that would be one argument you made for reducing CHEP. A second is that you thought the CHEP calculation for food should be reduced because you received in-kind food items from your parents-in-law. And then finally, you contended that the CHEP should be reduced insofar as it includes estimates for alcohol and tobacco because you received wine from your parents-in-law, and you and your wife do not smoke. Do you recall your arguments on those points?
Yes, I remember making those arguments, and that is right. You mentioned all right things. I confirm that.
And I just want to be sure. Those are the reasons you think that CHEP, as used by the Commission, is too high. Is that correct?
Correct. Correct. My family and I, we live in a small city, in Chedarlunga, and we live practically together with my parents-in-law. We have a joint household. Since other children, my wife's siblings, are abroad, living in Germany, they have no possibility to help their parents. Therefore, my wife and I, we are having a joint household with parents-in-law. The mother-in-law passed away. It's only my father-in-law left, and we have the possibility to save a significant part of our salary for buying food stuff because most food stuff we were getting in kind from my parents-in-law, Dragan Zinovic and Maria.
For the years that we identified inexplicable wealth, the years I referred to earlier, 2012, 2013, 2020, and 2023, in those years, records indicate that your household withdrew most or nearly all of its income in cash, ranged from 58 to, I think, as high as 100%. At that same time in those years, your cash savings, as you've identified them, did not increase. So you withdrew cash from banks in amounts that was greater than CHEP, and your cash savings did not increase. So if you didn't use those withdrawn amounts to pay for expenditures that would be part of CHEP, what did you spend the money?
We spent the money for the daily needs for life. We were not having exaggerated expenses. It was for daily, to cover daily expenses.
Okay. Okay. Then let me ask a slightly different question. In the years 2020 and 23, the Commission did identify expenditures made on bank cards, retail bank expenditures, higher for some expenses than would be calculated under CHEP, for instance, transportation expenditures or telecommunications and vacation expenditures. So there are identified expenditures via bank cards that exceed what the calculation would be under CHEP. So given that, how do you reconcile arguing that the CHEP calculation is too high?
I can tell you that we spent... We received on our salary cards, not only the salary, and we were withdrawing only that money, and we were spending the money for our daily needs. And I am sure that we did not use other money than what we received as salary.
Okay. Let me turn to a different topic mentioned in our notice of hearing, and this concerns a vehicle, Opel Vectra, that you had a right to use. And I wanted to just ask some questions that are follow-up questions to this vehicle. You gave us estimates of fuel expenses, the repair costs, and it does sort of suggest that the vehicle was used fairly extensively. There's some question about who actually used the vehicle as between you and your father-in-law. What would your father-in-law use this vehicle for, the Opel Vectra? This is the 2000, your model.
In 2007, this vehicle was purchased by my wife's brother, Ivan Dragan, and it was brought to the Republic of Moldova for his needs. Initially, this vehicle was left for my father-in-law and for Dragan Ivan to have the possibility to use the car when he was coming to Moldova. As I mentioned earlier, I asked the brother to issue a power of attorney to me to use that car so that I would have the possibility to get out some actions related to that car, to contract insurance, to have a technical testing. And when I received that official, and I declared, obviously, the use of that vehicle in every annual declaration, whether my father-in-law and I were using this vehicle equally. It wasn't only me. A significant part of a year, the car was used by my father-in-law, that is specifically about the summer time, the warm season, while during the cold season, I was using the car.
So if your father-in-law was primarily using it in the summer, how often did he use it, and what did he use it for?
He used it for his needs. He was only going to his village, Kopchak. He was using that car in the village on site.
Why would your father-in-law use the Opel Vectra when his children had already given him another car as a gift? He had a different car that had been given to him.
Actually, at the beginning, when he received this car, well, that car was in very poor condition, and it was always undergoing some repairs. But I would also like to tell you that for the... That the brother, Dragan Ivan, brought this car for himself so that he would have the possibility to drive it in Moldova, but also for his father. But I can show you, that was a very old car, and, well, it was in a very poor condition, and he was not using that vehicle. It stayed either in the garage or going through repairs. That's how it happened.
If your father-in-law or indeed your brother-in-law were using the Vectra, why were they not identified as a primary or secondary insured on the vehicle?
I understand your question, but it happened like that. They did not pay attention to it. They were using the car as it was, and I could do that. Somehow, it happened like this. It wasn't because I made something up right now in order to mislead the Commission. It just happened that they were using the car, but Dragan Ivan was using the car, but he was coming for very short periods of time. That is how it happened.
You mentioned, Judge Pilipenko, in some of your additional responses that your brother-in-law had provided, I think, 400 euros a year to your father-in-law to pay for maintenance and some of the fuel costs. We've not identified any bank transfers of such funds. How was that money provided to your father-in-law?
Her brother was bringing the money physically, in cash, or sending with some friends or acquaintances that were coming from Germany home. He never wired that money, never bank transfers, only cash.
Now, I understood... I'm sorry, let me finish.
Dragan Ivan was not bringing money for this car only, but for other needs of the parents. As a son and for the sister or my wife, he was also sending, providing money. Everyone was helping the parents.
So with regard to your use of the vehicle, I think you said earlier you used it primarily in the winter. Is that correct?
In the cold season, not only winter. Let's say, starting end of autumn until beginning of spring. That's the period when it was more comfortable, more convenient for me and my family.
So up until October of 2017, other than the Opel Vectra, how did you travel? What access did you have? What was your means of travel?
In October 2017, as you know, we purchased a new car, a Toyota. But before that, besides the Opel, we were not using any other car. I was either walking to my workplace or getting a lift with neighbors or taking the public bus. I'm not living far away, and my children, their kindergarten and school are not located far away. So I had the possibility to not use the car. While in the cold part of a year, it was more comfortable to use it.
And as you noted, in October 2017, you did... Your household acquired a car, a Toyota Orus. Who used that car when you acquired it?
That car was purchased again as a previous Opel by my wife's brother. He's the one who paid. We sent the money. He took the money when he visited us, and when he went to Germany, he found that car, and he brought that car home. At the customs, we registered that car. We had the customs clearance of the car done in my wife's name.
And I understand the registration history. I'm asking, who actually used it? In the period from the time that car was acquired up until 2021, when you acquired another car, in those four years, who was using the Orus? Was it you or your wife?
We used it together. Mostly, it was myself using it until 2020, until 2021, when we purchased a new car, the Skoda. We used the Toyota together with my wife. Formally, that car is registered in my wife's name.
Okay. Then why was it in 2017 that you acquired the Toyota? Why then did you get a car if, as you said, up to that point, you didn't need to use a private vehicle for travel? You had other options. Why in 2017 did you hit the Orus?
We purchased that car because we decided to have our own car. So back in time, long ago, we had a car, Zhaguli. And after that car, I did not have a car of my own, a car of my family's. And it happened so that we decided to have a car, a car that would belong to us, not to depend on the situation that may happen if the brother decided to sell his car. And after purchasing the Toyota, we did not... we did not need the Opel vehicle. We David handed it over to the father-in-law.
So after you after you acquired the Orus, you no longer actually physically had the the Opel. Is that what you're saying?
Most of the time, the biggest part of the time, there were maybe a couple of cases, one, two or three, when I was using that car, but not permanently, not on a permanent basis. I would use it. I would use only the Orus.
So after twenty seventeen, when you acquired the Toyota, were you using the the Opel at all? For that that period, twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one, when you got the Skoda?
Well, not, I not, I would say not. But I did do something about the maintenance of the car.
What what did you do about the maintenance?
Well, such as the car car insurance and the vehicle fitness test. I would take the car to that facility where they would do the vehicle fitness test. Because in the village of father-in-law, didn't have the possibility to have that done. And as I was residing in the city, the town, there there is such a facility for vehicle fitness testing. And there's the car insurance company as well based there. So I was taking care of this, but this is the only thing I was doing. But the car was with my father-in-law.
Okay, let me turn to a different topic. I want to ask you some questions about vacation expenses. In in your responses to the commission, you described some regular vacations that you'd taken at different times, both in Ukraine and then winter vacations to Potsdam, Germany. With regard to the vacations in Germany, we're talking now about the period twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-three. You stated that the associated expenses were approximately seventeen thousand Moldovan lay for for each of these winter vacations. My first question is, what what was, what did that seventeen thousand Moldovan lay cover? What what kinds of costs were included in that estimate?
With regards to these vacations and to Germany, all of those expenses were being covered by Dragan Natalia. And in in the first declaration that we received from the vetting commission, there I've put down that all of those trips were on their account. They would cover them. And those expenses would be focused on the procurement of flights, house clothes or excursions. And certain for certain purchases, we'd pay with the bank cards to be able to use the the tax-free facilities. And then we were being compensated these expenses back. And I would like, therefore, the commission to exclude from the outfalls all of the expenses related to our trips to Germany.
So first, just just to clarify, are you saying that the estimated amounts of seventeen thousand Moldovan lay for the Potsdam vacations, that that covered, that that was an estimate for all of the vacation-related costs? Is that correct?
I have put down those amounts, but with some level of approximation, so that it's an approximate amount. Given that we were not, we were not going away to 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 the seaside, for instance, where you pay for the the entire, you pay the entire amount for for the trip, for the flight tickets, for the hotel. We were visiting like guests, those relatives, that is relatives, family of my wife. So we were we were visiting them as guests. And we've never bought our own flight tickets. This would be done by the sister of my wife. Her husband would take care of the tickets. He would buy the tickets.
And what about the other vacation-related expenses? How how were those paid for?
Apologies, do you mean still the trips to Germany, the vacations to Germany?
Yes, the
I have put those amounts down. I've reported them because I would, didn't want to be misunderstood or didn't want it to appear like we didn't spend anything at all there. Of course, we've been to the stores there. We've bought things. We've been moving shopping. We've been on excursions. But that is an approximate amount. That is not a specific precise amount. Still, all of the expenses were incurred, were covered by the relatives of my wife. They invited us. We did not have to pay rent. We lived in their house, their apartments. And we did not spend anything for rent at all. And for 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 our stay there, we didn't pay.
Okay, so I've understood I've understood you to say that you didn't have to pay separately for lodging because you stayed with your sister's family. What what does the seventeen thousand Moldovan lay figure include apart from the cost of your your travel and your airfare? Does it include anything else?
To make sure that you are, you understand what I mean, this approximate amount includes expenses for our flight there and back. I would like to say that I have put down that amount because it, well, this amount was incurred by someone, was paid. But but that was paid by the relatives. I've put down the amount, but I have never stated that it was my family that spent this money. So in the, well, after the 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 notice with regards to the vetting, I indicated initially at the outset, if I may. So I have stated that all of the trips to Germany, all the expenses associated with the trips to Germany were incurred by the Pater's family, sister of my wife, and Dragan Ivan. When I've explained where we've been on vacation and where we've gone to and and what sources we used to cover that, that is where I also provided these details. As for other trips and vacations, I have stated directly, straightforward, that it was my family that paid for that. For instance, Turkey, Bulgaria, Greece. About these vacations, I have written that that these vacations were covered from budget of our families, the vacations to these countries. But as far as Germany is concerned, I've stated that the expenses, the expenses for Germany trips were covered by the relatives. But the amount that I put down was just an approximate one.
Understood. Why why did your, why did your wife's sister and brother pay for your family's vacations to Germany?
The family of my of my wife, I mean, they they're very connected to one another, even though they live far away from us. They, I mean, we feel like one big family. You might believe that, well, given the salary that we were receiving, you might think that we could have covered these expenses. However, it was their wish or their desire to. They invited us over to to visit them. And and they have, as I have shown you, there there is supporting documentation regarding their earnings and their earnings are very considerable. And that allows them to cover such expenses.
And and Judge Pilipenko, from what you've said today, I understood that your wife's sister and brother, they were paying the expenses directly. They were buying the the tickets for for you and your family. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, now, in in twenty twenty-one, for that trip to Germany, the commission did identify that approximately twenty-six thousand two hundred and twenty-one Moldovan lay were were paid from your bank account with MAID for things like clothes, entertainment, restaurants and groceries. And and when we ask you about those expenditures, you stated that, again, your wife's brother and sister reimbursed you for the cost. Was that the only time they actually reimbursed you for vacation-related travel to Germany?
No, every time we'd we'd go there. We've been doing that for a while. I can't remember when exactly that started, on winter holidays to to Germany. They they would always do this.
Well, and and I I I'm sorry, I may have been unclear. I, what I was asking is, you you said that for these twenty twenty-one expenses that were paid out of your bank account, you had been reimbursed. You'd been repaid for those by your sister-in-law or brother-in-law. And my question is, did they otherwise, for any of your other trips, give you money for your expenses as distinct from paying for the travel themselves?
Well, for instance, regarding the trips to Ukraine, I have further specified. They would not cover other expenses to other countries but Germany. So when we'd go to Ukraine with with the family of my brother and when we'd go to Germany. But other countries, and in twenty twenty-three, as far as I can remember, my wife has been to Italy with the family of my brother. And all the expenses were covered by the brother. She took our children there, they traveled together. And then, from Germany, they traveled to Rome for a trip. They've been there for three or four days. And the expenses were all covered by the brother. All of the expenses, I am honest when I'm saying that all of the expenses incurred in Germany and in Italy in this particular case, they were all covered because she's ordered that that trip and they've had accommodation, they've booked accommodation. And the brother of my wife covered all of those expenses. And I have detailed this, the the information regarding this trip.
I think this is my, might be my last question related to vacations. You know, obviously, if if your brother-in-law and your sister-in-law were paying for all these vacations to Germany, that was obviously a significant amount of assistance they were providing to you and your family. Why did why did you not declare any of this in in the declarations that you filed with the National Integrity Authority or previously the National Integrity Commission?
I hadn't declared this support, this help provided. I did not report it, did not declare it as a donation because I didn't think that was supposed to be regarded as a donation. The formal point of view is compensations were not more than fifteen average salaries in the national economy. And I I don't think these amounts are considerable. I wasn't regarding that as a donation, that is to be reported. Such as when you get something from a stranger or someone who doesn't have a relationship with me, like relatives do, so to speak. We are like one family. For us, this is something that is absolutely normal, ordinary. And I understand that as a judge, how should I put it? How should I put it? But, you know, like, we live like one big family, one single family. How should I say it so that you understand what I'm trying to, to say? Yes, I am a judge, but I am also a human, being a simple person. We have very close connections, a very close relationship. And I didn't think that I should, um, report such amounts. They were not big amounts that needed to be declared.
Let me, um, let me turn back. There was another question about, um, automobiles that I, I wanted to ask you. After you joined the Court of Appeals, um, I believe that was in the fall of 2018, you were working in Kahuru. What, what vehicle did you use while you were in Kahuru? What car did you use?
Toyota.
Toyota.
So that, that was the Toyota that had been purchased in 2017. And you're, I understood that after you began working in Kahuru, your, your wife and children continued living in, um, Chedar Lunga, correct?
Correct.
That is correct, but not on a permanent.
How did, how did your wife, when you had the Toyota in Kahuru, how did your wife and children transport themselves around in Chedar Lunga?
I was going to say that I was not always using that car. I would, well, I have some acquaintances who work there and they, every day go to work. I would remain there for a week. And then I would return back home and go back home for the days off. I wasn't always using that car.
All right. Um, Judge, I'm gonna change topics then to, um, ask first a couple of questions just about cash savings that you, um, identified as having at the end of, of the year 2011. So again, this would be treated under the commission's approach as, um, money that you had available at the outset of 2012. Um, in the information you initially provided to the commission, you said you had 130,000 Moldovan lei in cash at the end of 2011. And you said that was made up of, of two different things. 80,000 of it you had, um, received as gifts at your wedding 10 years before. And the other 50,000, you said, had come from, um, your family, your parents, your parents-in-law and your brothers. So first, with respect to the 80,000 that you said had been received from your wedding in 2001, um, how exactly did you keep that money? That would have been money you kept over a decade. Can you just explain exactly how you, how you did that?
I and my wife want to build a house. And when our family was formed, since that very moment, we were setting money aside. And this money, we've been keeping this money at home. Some of the money was kept with our parents, just to be, well, for safety purposes. We were just keeping that money and that's it. We had the possibility to, to live without needing to spend that particular amount of money. We didn't need that money to, uh, cover our day-to-day expenses. So we just kept that money like that.
And do, do I understand you to say you kept, um, you kept it in cash, some at your house and some with your, your parents?
Yes.
Do you, did it, if this was money you received in 20, in 2001 from your wedding gifts, um, did you, I mean, was there some amount that you kept for that entire period of time and some amount that was kept by your parents? Did it change? I'm just, again, trying to understand over that 10-year period, where the cash physically was?
I can't tell precisely now, but a part of the money was with us and another part of that money was with the parents. Now, I can't remember very well, it's been a long time ago.
Okay. Um, let me turn then to the 50,000 in, um, Moldovan lei. Initially, you said that these had been received from family members, but then later, um, you revised your answer to say that these had been saved, um, by your wife from her salary. Um, why, why did your answer change? What, what caused you to, um, have a different explanation for that amount?
Maybe I did not understand the question right from the very beginning. So I did not purposefully, I did not want to mislead the commission. I talked to my wife. I remember that that's what we would do. Um, out of the salary received for every month, we would send some, we would set some money aside at home and keep it at home. We would set it aside from every month's salary. And throughout 10 years and, um, every month, we would set aside a small amount of money for the duration of 10 years. And if we add up together all the months of the year and keeping in mind that it's a 10-year period.
Okay, let's, um, let's move from the cash savings that you, you said you had at the end of 2011 to, um, a later year, 2020. You may recall from the commission's, um, hearing notice that based on the information we have available, it seems that for 2020, your household made cash deposits into savings accounts totaling, um, 380,000 Moldovan lei. And, um, the commission's calculation of the cash available to your household that year was, was approximately 131,000 Moldovan lei less. So there was a shortfall by the commission's, um, calculation. And, and the commission's calculation, um, reflected the cash that was withdrawn by you and your wife, the cash savings that you used and, and the cash expenses. Can, can you explain what's your response to the commission's determination that there's, there was a shortfall of 131,000 dollars in terms of explaining the total cash deposits of 380,000 Moldovan lei?
Initially, I can explain that this was checked in the audit report regarding the alleged differences in cash of my household. And finally, it was found that my household did not have cash deficiency, even in 2020. If you are asking me about 380,000 lei, I can explain in more detail. At the beginning of the year 2020, which means at the time of filing the declaration in early 2020, I had savings of 90,000 lei. 90,000 lei. Plus, my wife and I received salaries around 449,000 lei. And if we look at the bank statements and see how much money we did withdraw from the ATM. I mean, the bank cards, the salary bank cards of both my wife and I. It will follow that the two of us withdrew in total 323-something thousand lei. I don't remember the precise amount. This money was withdrawn in cash. And if, I mean, with these savings of 90,000 lei, it follows that we could, we had the possibility to deposit in cash the amount of 380,000 lei. Respectively, we were left with around 158 or 152,000 lei for life, for living expenses. So once more, we had cash, a certain amount, 90,000, and we withdrew during 2022 an amount that is higher than 323,000 lei. This is confirmed by bank statements, my salary and my wife's salary statements.
So that, that's your explanation of how you're able to come up with the 380,000, um, in cash deposits?
Yes, exactly.
But let me turn to some questions that relate, um, to places that you've lived. You, um, informed the commission that in the years 2019 to 2021, you lived in an apartment, um, in Kahuru on Nagutsi Street. But this, this address was never identified in your NEA declarations. Why, why was that not included in the, in the declarations?
When I became a judge of the Kahuru Court of Appeal, I moved into the city. I decided that it would be easier for me not to travel back and forth every day. I concluded a contract. I think the period, 1st of October 2018 to 1st of October 2019, that contract was concluded officially. It was registered with the state tax service.
Yeah, I appreciate you mentioning the, the contract. Um, you, you provided a copy that, um, reflects a rental agreement for the year October 2018 to 2019 and a rent of, um, 1,700 Moldovan lei, of which 119 Moldovan lei was paid in taxes. This seems to be a very low rental rate. Can you explain how that rental rate was determined?
That's what we agreed on with the owner. That is a very small apartment. And, you see? Well, that's how we agreed. It, it wasn't a, an amount that is too little. I didn't think it was too little. That's how we agreed.
And, and did, this, this agreement seems to only go through, uh, by its terms, it only goes through October 2019. Did you continue, um, living in the apartment until 2021 for the same rental rates? Was, was that agreement the one that applied for 2020 and 21?
No. I wanted the commission to discuss some of the questions in a closed session because it is about some personal issue. But despite the fact that for me, the amount was good, I had to leave that apartment and to traveling every day from home to work for a personal reason, my own reason.
No, I'm, I'm sorry.
Family issues.
Yeah. Judge, I'm sorry. I, I, I didn't, I did not mean to ask why you stopped staying in that apartment. Would I, let me ask two different questions. So for first, for the period October 2018 to 2019, did you actually pay the rent of, of 7, 1,700 Moldovan lei for that period?
For the period mentioned in the contract, yes. Since 2011 to 2019. After that, I did not pay.
So you did not pay any rent for 2020 or 21?
20 and 21, partially 2021.
Yeah, did you, did you pay?
When I moved.
Did you pay any rent for those, for that period?
After 2019?
Yes.
No, I did not.
Okay, now, in, in the explanations you've given the commission, you stated that for the period 2021 to 2023, you lived rent-free in a part, in an apartment in Cahul on, I believe it's Taranatula Street, paying only the utilities. Why, why were you able to live in that apartment for two years without paying rent?
The owner of that apartment, Vichislav, is an acquaintance of mine. When I came to Cahul, I knew that he had that apartment. But some boys were living there, his brother and a friend of his. And he could not ask them to leave. He did not have the possibility to lease that apartment to me. I mean, not to lease, but to let me live there. They did not pay for utilities, got a debt for gas. They made a mess of the apartment and he had to ask them to empty the apartment. Sarivichislav always since 2019 with his family. Is permanently living in Germany. He has income, significant income. He has a house over there. And he does not need an income from rental of this apartment. Again, to to convince you, before I moved into that apartment, it was other relatives of his that were living there, not paying any rent. He did not need to earn an income from that apartment. And after it happened like that with those young people, that mess, they did not pay utilities. There was a 4,000 lei debt for gas. He had to pay for that cover to re-establish, they were reconnected to the gas. And he asked me to live there, to take care of the apartment. Meaning that I'm not doing any repairs or something, but something is to be done, like he changed the door. His stepfather changed, replaced the door, replaced windows on the balcony. That's all on their account. I'm only living there to make sure that it's not abandoned, you know, because an abandoned house or apartment is a bad thing. And honestly, he did not need any income from this rental. That's why he allowed me to live there.
So when did you first begin living in that apartment? The one on?
I can't say precisely. In 2021. Honestly, I don't remember exactly. But I could check. I did not have an application at that time to pay for, to pay utilities using the app. I installed it afterwards and probably in summertime of 2021.
Now, according to the Public Services Agency, your formal residence for the period September 22 to February 2023 was rented at a house in Cahul on Mateve Basaram Street. Several other people have their residence registered at that address, dozens of people. Why, why were you registered there as, as having your formal address?
Here, probably. But from what I understood, from the information provided by the Public Services Agency, 54 people were registered on that address, at that address. I was registered for one simple reason. I decided to file, to, to apply for regaining Romanian citizenship. For that procedure, you need to gather a number of documents. Which had to be requested by the Public Services Agencies and Agency and received by it. Until that date, I was registered in Chadrungah City. In order to obtain those documents, I had to come on working days to come there. And I did not have the possibility to do it on working days. Since, according to current rule, you can request documents from the Public Services Agency at the place of your registration. I got to know a person who consulted me about the procedure of filing documents. And he helped me with that procedure. So he told me that he could register me at his address to make it more convenient. I did not have a possibility to get registered somewhere in Cahul. I did not have the possibility to get registered at the address of the apartment on Tineretul Street because at that time, the owner, Sarivichislav, as actually now, he is, well, he was in Germany then and he is in Germany now. To register a stranger in an apartment or in the house, you need the direct consent of the owner. And for this reason, I was not registered, registered in that apartment. It would have been more convenient to be registered on Tineretul Street. But the person offered me to be registered at his place. And I did not think at all that he could have, there could be problems with that registration. That registration cannot be perceived in any way, and I insist on that. Nothing related to being an owner or even a user of that apartment, sorry, of that house.
So I understand you never actually resided at the, at the house at Mateve Basaram Street, correct?
Never.
Why, why was it that you could not register at the apartment at Taranatula Street?
Once more, I want to make sure that you understand. For registration, one needs the consent of the owner, a direct consent. Which means the owner comes physically to the Public Services Agency and files a request that he agrees that this person would be registered at the, at the address of their house or apartment. Without the owner's consent, you cannot do it. Sarivichislav? At the date of my registration, at of me getting the identity card, he was in Germany, I mentioned. I talked about that, but he could not come to the country. Like, he's coming now on a vacation with his family for 10 days. And now, he asked me not to be in that apartment so that he could live that short period, 10 days. Now I have to travel Chadrungah to Cahul. And I don't have the possibility to live in that apartment because it is his apartment. That's why it happened so that I registered at the address of the person who was handling my preparation for regaining Romanian documents. In a short, or after a short period of time, in March or February 2022, that registration was automatically erased. And I could not use, please, my identity card since some institutions show that the document is not valid because my residence was deleted. And that was very uncomfortable for me. And there have been more, many more people registered there. And I had never had any connection to that house, to that household.
Okay, let me then move to a different topic. You've provided information to the commission that shows that acting under a power of attorney, you, you purchased an apartment on behalf of your brother in Kishinaw in 2019. And you've informed the commission that you didn't have any connection to this particular apartment and you used funds provided by your brother to make the purchase. So just a few follow-up questions. How, how did the money that your brother gave you to buy the apartment? How, how were those funds actually transmitted to you?
That money, a large extent of that amount that is mentioned in the information, was brought by my brother when he was coming home. He was coming home. According to the information that he provided, he came home five times until the date of purchasing the apartment.
Okay, I understand that. But how did, how did your brother actually transmit the money to you that was used to buy the apartment?
I understand you. He left that money to my parents. He, they were saving or keeping them at home.
Who are these? This was money that was just kept in cash?
Da, da. Yes, yes, of course.
And, and when did you actually take possession of the cash? When did you get that cash?
Just before buying the apartment. I came to my parents, took the money, went to Kishinaw. I did not keep that money at home, never, not a day, not an hour. I came to my parents' house, I took that money and I carried out the official transaction as you can see it in the documents. I asked my brother to come and do this on his own. But he couldn't do it. Something related to his work. But I wanted him to come. But all of a sudden, prices went up for real estate. We decided quickly to search for an apartment or something and I did search quickly. And how to, how should I put it? My brother is not entirely happy with my choice, but I had to do it, to do it quickly. Well, that's how it worked and that, that is why I was involved in the transaction. But anyway, I don't have any connection to it as an owner.
You said you don't have any connection to it as an owner. Do you have any, have you ever used the apartment? Do you have any other connection other than as an owner?
No, I did not live there. I had nothing. I engaged in no action as far as that apartment is concerned. There were acquaintances of my brother who stayed there. They have lived there. They were paying for utilities. But I did not participate. I did not get involved in any way with those actions. That's his business of my brother's, that is. However, there was a situation. There was a young newly formed family staying there. And they have asked for the possibility to have internet connected there. So my son, my family, Pilipenko Maxim, he entered into an internet service provision contract. That is the only way. My son lived and he's been staying in a dormitory. Now, he's on vacation, but he's a medical university student. And although my brother is a very close relative, I mean, he could have allowed my son to stay there, but we decided that our son as a student should live in a dormitory with other students, with other people like him. And and there were other peoples staying there. And as you can see, I have read the preliminary conclusion of the Commission that it appears the Commission did not find any document that could confirm any link between me and that apartment. I did not pay anything at all for that apartment. I have never stayed, I've never lived there from 2019. And that's quite a lot of time. My brother wanted to buy a house or an apartment in London. However, he is not married. And because of this, it is very difficult for one to take a loan, a mortgage. Banks allow mortgages and most of the cases to spouses, to a husband and a wife, when both are working. But my brother, he's not married. He doesn't have a wife. He doesn't have children. And for a long time now, he's been staying in this apartment that he is renting together with other people. He does not require, he does not need, I mean, that's his lifestyle. He works in a security company. He is like a security officer at a high level. And he's got a very good salary. And it just didn't happen. It was not possible for him to buy a house or an apartment there. So we've had a discussion and I suggested him to buy some asset here in the capital city to have some certainty that there is money safely placed in a real estate asset. But you never know how things happen in one's life. He might return. Either way, it's not like he broke any ties with Moldova. Yes, he stays there. He has the Yuki citizenship. But either way, we still have a close relationship.
So Judge Pilipenko, and this may be my last question. Other than making the purchase under the power of attorney on behalf of your brother, have you done anything else on his behalf related to the apartment, such as collect rent?
No.
Okay. Let me ask the other panel members if they have any questions that they would like to raise.
Of course. You mentioned that your brother is not using this apartment currently. Is that correct? Yes. He is away abroad and this apartment is now being rented out. No, right now it is not being rented out. Nobody is staying there now. Who is using this apartment now? He's a acquaintance. You participated in the purchase and sale transactions and you handed over to the seller personally. Is that correct? Yes, physically. And did the notary check the origin of these funds? What documents did you provide to that effect?
I have had a consultation with the notary before this transaction. I was told what documentation I was supposed to bring. I have shown, I presented to the notary supporting documentation that proved the official income earned by my brother in London. Can you tell us specifically what was that? Was it an employment contract, bank transfers? What was it? It was an employment contract? And I can't remember well what this is called in English. I think it's something like information from the tax authorities, the tax service with regards to the salary earned by my brother over a particular period of time and income and taxes that was paid. Now, as for the funds, how was the money brought into the country by transfer or in cash? In cash, all of it? Not all of it? My brother would, before this transaction occurred, he had visited Moldova five times. He had come to Moldova five times. Every time he'd come, he'd bring 10,000 euros, which did not have to be reported. So he would come to Moldova only to bring the money? Or he was just simply visiting to see the parents? And that within quite short period of time, a year or since 2011, when he started, when he moved to England and all the way to 2019. And he would come after that as well, but we are speaking about the period of time before the transaction. So he's been to Moldova five times and he would travel by plane. Not only to bring the money in, he would be just visiting the parents. And he would also at the same time bring the money specifically in order to buy an apartment, buy the apartment. Now, the situation about this money is that every day he was able to withdraw, to cash out a particular amount. I can't remember, was it 300 or? He could collect every day by cashing out money. He lives together with other people, sharing an apartment. And he was afraid of keeping that much money on him in his room all the time. So shortly before coming home, he would take from his friends' money, bring it here and then he would give money back to friends. Or the friend was giving him the money, sorry. On the basis of this information that I've shared with you, well, you can see that he is giving other people some money. He is just living his life and then he gives that money back to people.
Now, the last question. After you purchased, after the apartment was purchased, who took care of all the other contracts with the different utility providers, other providers, or then the rental agreements? Who took care of that?
I don't know how these people, I mean, was there an official contract rental agreement or not? I don't know. I did not have anything to do with that. I mean, though we have a close relationship, I did not participate in that. I did not get involved with that. But as far as I know, it wasn't us who entered into those agreements with utility services. I mean, all these agreements have already been entered into by the previous owners. And if you look at the contracts, you can see that nothing changed. I mean, on the bill, there is the name of the previous owners of the apartment still. So the bills are only paid and that's it. Understood? Thank you.
... in Cahul and Matei Băzara Street in 2022. Just, perhaps you have that data. How much did you pay for being registered on that address?
Nothing at all, nothing at all. I did not pay anything at all to be registered on that address. I got acquainted with a person who helped me to get the paperwork, the documentation ready to file that documentation to be able to re-establish or regain Romanian citizenship. I did not pay anything at all to be registered like that.
You got acquainted to the owner of the house?
No, the, well, the wife of him, his wife, Anna, is the owner, the official formal owner of that house, of that asset. He is her husband. It's him that I had a relationship with.
Food. So he assisted you when reinstalling your citizenship? And is he a kind of a lawyer or what kind of profession does he have?
No, he is not a lawyer. He has experience. As far as I know, he's experienced with this. And he knows how to to do this in an easier way. He told me that he could help me, that he could help me obtain all the documentation that I needed. And how should I say? I know that this is something that he does. This is something that he does, helping people like this. I met him through other people and I did not pay anything for this. He just provided me some pieces of advice.
Support you, let's say, as a professional, but just as an acquaintance? You didn't pay for it at all? You didn't pay for his services? Did you pay for his services?
No, I did not pay.
Any other questions by the panel members? Well, Judge Pilipenko, would you like to make a brief statement before we conclude the hearing?
Yes, thank you. If I may read it out loud quickly. I have the honor to provide a detailed position that I have with regards to matters related to the criteria of financial and ethical integrity with regards to which the Commission has doubts that I am meeting.
I would like to ask the Commission not to perceive my answers as an attempt to mislead. I answered the questions that were asked. And I did that honestly and openly. For everyone, the vetting procedure is a new one and I did not know how deep the answers were supposed to be. For this reason, I adjusted the answers starting from the clarification questions that came in the subsequent rounds. I appreciate the vetting procedure as a as an entire thing, a continuous thing. This is why the Commission sends multiple question rounds and organizes hearings that ultimately aim at clarifying all doubts. I declare that all our expenses were only made from the official salaries, foodstuffs from the parents, help from my wife's brother and sister, Dragana Ivanat-Peters Natalia, as well as help from my brother, Pilipenko Roman. During the three years, 2021 to 2023, I was checked by the National Integrity Authority. And they have never been found any irregularities. Also, the documents issued by that authority are final and binding. They were not appealed within the timeline established by the legislation and the criticism brought up by the Commission could, I think, could be reconsidered. I would like to tell the Commission that from the beginning of our marriage with Pilipenko Valentina, we tried to save as much money as possible because we were gathering money for building a house. At the same time, I would like to draw your attention to the fact that despite living formally in the city, in the rayon center, almost every week, we were going to my wife's parents, helping them out with their households, with physical work.
helping them out with their households, with physical work. Esteemed Commission, I would like to be understood. I understand that criticisms of the Commission are guided by rationale, by opportunity, but in this specific case, precise relationships need to be taken into account at the behavior of the subject of evaluation. Because I decided, for instance, to use the support provided by my wife's parents, that is support provided by her brother expenses for the car and covering expenses for our trips abroad. Please, esteemed Commission, please do evaluate my situation objectively and with understanding.
Judge, does that conclude your comments?
Yes.
Thank you. That then brings us to the end of today's hearing. Judge Pilipenko, thank you for your submissions and answers to the Commission's questions. After the hearing, the panel will approve an evaluation report stating its conclusion whether the subject meets the criteria for ethical and financial integrity under Law Number 252. The panel will strive to complete and approve its evaluation report in a v, and announce its conclusion as soon as possible. Today's hearing is now closed. Good day to everyone.
May I, please?
Yes, Judge.
I would like to submit, if possible, my statement of position in writing, signed by me. Would you like to study it?
Yes, please leave a copy with the Secretariat staff at the hearing room and we'll include that in the evaluation file and consider it in completing our report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you and